I'd like to call the order, July 18th, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting. Roll call.
Roll call, Commissioner Volz, absent, Commissioner Spurber.
Here.
Commissioner Nowicki.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Hewens.
Here.
Commissioner Tanarota.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Doug Thornley.
Here.
City Planner Armando Lennell.
Here.
All right, our next item, item number three is public comment. This is where the public can speak on any item or off an item. Specific items, if you want to speak during that item, you can also. So, open it up. Does anybody want to speak at this point? Okay, let me bring that back. Okay, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those for it? Aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay. Approval of the minutes? Shall move?
Second.
All that's for?
Aye.
Aye.
All that's against? Okay, approved. Announcements and comment, committee reports? Do we have anything? Okay. Moving right along, informational items. Jim here?
Mr. Chairman Spurber. Do we, would you like to do the presentation now, or move it to later so we can have the items and folks that are here?
I know. Would anybody like, either way, or if you'd like to move it so everybody, unless people would love to listen to this subject, probably, probably not that excited. Can somebody make motion? Maybe change?
I'd rather keep it.
You'd like to keep it?
Yeah.
Okay, well then, let's keep it.
Mark, this is the team over here, as we talked about on Tuesday at the study session, the city of Sparks is going on an endeavor of updating the Title 20 and the zoning code, as you're all more familiar with than you probably would ever have thought you'd be. We have hired a consulting team. Commissioner Sanders played a role in helping us to identify a team that worked with the city of Sparks. And we've hired that team headed by Mark White. And he has, also on his team is Abe, Abe I heard here last night.
Abe Barge.
And Angela Foose, locally from CFA. We've prepared a presentation, and I'll call Mark up, and he can report the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we need to pull up right here. Where's it at, Jim?
Uh, where?
The presentation?
Should be in there. I'm sorry, Jim. I want to go to... And, um, I think yes. See, I think that... But it's in the video. Is that okay?
Ah, that's what it looks like.
I'll have you sit here, and you can let me know what you want to... Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Sparks Planning Commission. My name's Mark White with White &amp; Smith LLC. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. Go ahead. I'll just do a thumbs up or something. Switch to the next slide. Yeah, there you go. Today, I'm going to cover a couple of things. First of all, what we're doing here, why we're updating the zoning code, a little bit about the outreach we're going to engage in as we move forward, what our basic steps are, I mean, how we're going to get from the code you have in place today, Title 20 today, versus what you're going to have at the end of this process, some of the, you know, how we overcome some of the roadblocks we're going to face. Because as you know, there's two things everybody hates. Everybody hates their existing zoning regulations, and then a lot of people hate anything that changes their existing zoning regulations. So, we're, we're used to doing that, having worked all over the country, building on the zoning assessments that you've already done, and we're very mindful of the fact that you had another consulting firm in, and consultation with staff, with you all, with city council, a lot of policy decisions have already been made. And we're not here to revisit those, we're here to implement those. And so, we're going to cover some of those things, as well as a few other ideas that we had, and some of our specific texts. And I promise to speak as quickly as I can, so, because I know you all have other things to do tonight. Okay. A little bit about us. I'm Mark White. I'm a planner and an attorney. I have a law degree, and I'm also a professional planner. We've done projects like that for over 150 communities in 36 different states around the country, including some prior projects here in the great state of Nevada. Working with me is Angela, with CFA, who has great local knowledge, and, you know, knows the community very well, knows the planning process and the zoning process in the community very well. And also Abe Barge, with Winter &amp; Company out of Colorado. They, Abe worked on the Denver zoning update a few years ago, and is working with us for an update for a community known as Olathe, Kansas. It's in the Kansas City area, which is where I am. I'm in Kansas City, Missouri. They're on the wrong side of the state line, they're on the Kansas side, but they're a community a lot like Sparks, I think, demographically, and in a lot of different ways. And so, one of the things we're working with them on is this whole concept of composite or modular zoning. And I think, I think Winter &amp; Company is the best urban design firm in the country, so we're really great, we're really pleased to have them on the team. And they're going to help us with graphics and urban design concepts and things like that. Why, and what we're doing here is several things, and some of you may remember some of the details of the assessment that was done last year, but a couple of the things we're getting to is a new organizational structure for the ordinance that makes the information easier to find, is going to have a more logical format, so when you're looking for, for example, what's the maximum FAR in this district, it's going to be organized in a way that gets you all to the information you need more quickly than you can today. The regulation's going to be easier to use because of a couple of things. One is, even though I'm an attorney, sorry Doug, one of the things I do a lot is I focus a lot on trying to make the language I write as easy to understand as possible. I don't like jargon, if you don't need it. Some stuff you need, because of state law and other things. But I like to write short, concise sentences, direct, active voice, things like that, a lot of bullets, a lot of tables. And between us and Abe and CFA, we're going to illustrate this ordinance. So when you read, we'll illustrate what the dimensional standards are, and what that looks like when things are built, and that's going to be side by side with the text. We're going to try to make the things you want to see happen in the city of Sparks as easy to do as possible, through more administrative review, less special use review and things like that. Hopefully, that will not only make things more business friendly, but will give you all more weekends to spend with your children and families and things like that, instead of processing applications. And we're also going to deal with procedures, the procedural things. And I know one of the things in the assessment report was to consolidate all the procedures into one chapter, to have a common format that goes from the very beginning, you know, what kinds of things does this procedure apply to, how are the applications processed, and finally, what did you just approve? What rights did this give the applicant? And so, that'll all follow a common format, and it'll be a lot easier to use and understand at the end of the day. So, some of the steps to any, any code update, or first of all, to really scope it out, we've already done that. We've, they, the city staff did a great job in the RFP. All of you, the other consultant team, the city council, did a great job of scoping out and creating a blueprint for the new code. So that whole process is done. So, really, we're here to write the thing. We're going to start out with a detailed outline. You've got a general outline in the assessment report. We're going to sit down and describe where all the sections are going. Where the existing section is today, we'll have a correspondence table, for example, so you can find out where it is. Some people start going, well, where's those hillside regulations? They disappeared. No, they'll be in the development standards, you know, and so we'll, we'll sort out all those details in the outline, and then when we get sign off on that, we'll write the ordinance. The next step after writing it, after the open houses and our public process, then it moves to adoption. Of course, it goes through you all for recommendation in the city council for formal adoption. And we can also add in, if we needed, a process for training. I don't think that's part of our current contract, but that could be done as well. But the new ordinance will be so easy to read, you won't need any training. And then, there's always roadblocks. I mean, I think there's a lot of broad consensus. Number one, that the existing code needs some changing, needs some improvement, and it needs to be easier to read, but there are always, you know, people who like things the way they are. There will be, you know, some developers who don't like the new standards, maybe, there may be some neighborhood groups who don't like the new standards, and that's why we have a public process as well, not to revisit the decisions you've already made, but to discuss things with people and assure them that this is going to work as we go forward. So, we're going to build on the zoning assessment by consolidating a lot of things right now that are spread amongst multiple documents, and even things like procedures that are spread in multiple chapters of the ordinance. We're just going to have one chapter now that says how, how somebody who wants to start a business here in the city goes about getting their process permitted. We're going to clarify, you know, what the development standards are and who they provide for, and we're going to deal with this balancing act between flexibility and certainty. I had a developer, we wrote the San Antonio Unified Development Ordinance about 12 years ago, and one of the developers showed up at the hearing, says, what we want is flexible certainty. So, yeah, it's always a balancing act. They want flexibility when they need it, but they also want to know what the rules of the game are, and so do neighborhoods. Neighborhoods want to know, and somebody investing, for example, in a new office development or new employment complex wants to know what's going to go on around them. So, that's a, that's a balancing act. And also, reducing the reliance the city has a lot of times on discretionary review, plan development, and things like, all of these handbooks that just make the staff's time so much fun, having to administer what probably feels like codes for a lot of different jurisdictions instead of just one. We're, we're going to reduce the reliance on that through the new standards. And also, we're going to deal with the zoning and design guidelines now. A lot of the standards that developers are held to now are actually codified somewhere else. So we're going to, one of the key issues we're going to come to grips with is, do they really need to be in five or six different documents? Can we put them all in one place and organize it well enough that even though the document may get a little longer, the information you need is easier to find, and you get a better sense of how everything hangs together? Instead of just having your residential districts in one place, and standards for one thing in one place, and standards for another thing in another, we can consolidate it all in one handy document that makes the information easier to find. So that's one of the things we're going to look at, and one of our key things to come to grips with, and from the, from the, under the hood type of writing process, this is one of the more tedious things to do in a zoning ordinance update, but it's also one of the most critical, I think, is getting that list of uses just right, putting in enough detail that we haven't left anything important out, that we don't have uses that people are having, that the applicants are having to process, that somebody wanting to open a business for something in the city, and they can't find it anywhere in the use list, and they don't know what district it's permitted in, so they don't know whether I can just start business today in the district, or whether I have to get a rezoning, or even if I get a rezoning, we don't have the use listed anywhere. So we're going to deal with that whole issue of being comprehensive, but also organizing it in a way that's logical, that flows well, and makes the information you need, again, easy to find with this, with a use table. Again, I can pick the use, I can go across, I can see exactly where it's allowed in the city. And we usually build from, and your assessment report mentioned the American Planning Association's land-based classification standards, or LBCS. We also spend a lot of time looking at the, what's called the NAICS, the North American Industrial Classification System, which is the list the U.S. Department of Census publishes as every sort of known business or industry in North America. And it's in the 2012 version. We've just gone through that just recently on several different codes. So, through that, through your legislative history, through talking with staff about applications, they're, that, you know, they're getting, we're going to have a good, complete list of uses and distribute it throughout the city. Next? Oh, sorry. Thumbs up. And we want to make sure this works in the variety of contexts you have in this city. I mean, north and south of the highway, the character of the city is dramatically different. I mean, you get your industrial areas, south of the highway, you've got a mix, you've got downtown, older neighborhoods, and newer neighborhoods north of the city. And one of the things we've looked at in some of the other communities is having this whole concept of composite zoning, for example. A basic commercial district, way north of the city in the newer neighborhoods, would need much different building design standards, perhaps with much different site design standards. There may be a new commercial business south of the highway in an industrial district, which maybe doesn't need the level of detailing, which maybe doesn't need the same kind of site design, but it's an asset for that area, because it's a place where people would go to lunch when they're, on their lunch hour, and they're working in one of those industrial buildings. So we can have the independent variable being all those uses in C1, but maybe building design standards with different grades, and site design standards with different grades, so we can make these regulations more effective for the context that they operate in. So, our first task right now, we're, we're in task one today. We spent a lot of time with Jim yesterday, and even during the interview, driving around the city. So we spent time with Jim, we spent time with Angela, seen the different parts of the city, the different character areas of the city. So that's our windshield survey, where we're reviewing all the documents. We've actually reviewed them once before the interview, and now we're reviewing them again in a lot of detail. And then, we're going to refine the scope afterwards if there's anything we need to change. So we're having our orientation, orientation session tonight, explaining to the public what we're doing. And then, we're, and we're having staff meetings. So we've had a lot of intensive meetings with the planning staff, your code enforcement staff, your city attorney, and others, to get all those perspectives on, on what needs to change. Our next task will be doing that detailed working outline that shows all the different chapters and sections of the ordinance, how they hang together, how they relate to what you have in effect today, and some examples. And we're also going to create a style template for the Word document. We're, we're going to write this in Word, because everybody has access to Word. Now, some consultants use InDesign, especially the urban designers. Abe does a lot of work in InDesign. We do a lot of work in InDesign. You make documents look really, really nice and spectacular, but then you hand it off to the client, and nobody knows how to use it. We are, we're also adept at making them look really nice in Word, but we're going to create a good heading style sheet and all that, so that, you know, when we're, when we've gone and we've done our job, y'all can pick it up and amend it when you need to, and format it, and keep everything hanging together. And then, after we do that, we'll have a workshop and an open house for the public and stakeholders to weigh in. The next task, next task will be drafting. This is what I usually look like when I start, I usually look a lot worse when I'm done. But that's where we'll, we'll work within that new structure. We'll create a discussion draft, so when you see the first draft on the, that comes out on the website, don't panic if you see things you disagree with, you'll have plenty of opportunities to weigh in. We'll have open houses. We're also going to work with, with Angela and her, her shop on the rezoning process, because, you know, there's going to be a lot of property owners and others who'll say, wait a minute, you know, my zoning has changed or something, you know, what does this allow? Especially when the list of uses changes, there'll be a lot of questions on, can I still do this? There'll be questions for surrounding neighborhoods as well, you know, about what exactly is allowed. So we'll be answering those questions as we go. We'll also have an executive summary. It'll be a nice, brief summary that shows people, you know, how this ordinance is read, how you find information, and how it works. And then, and this is an overview of our schedule to date. It's a process that goes through, right now, we're anticipating through December of 2014. We'll spend a few months doing the outline, a couple drafts of that. We'll need about, you know, five or six months to write the ordinance. It's never as easy as it sounds. It's a lot of work, because this is a very comprehensive document. And so, we'll have a couple rounds of open houses and, and open meetings to discuss the drafts of the ordinance, to make changes, to make sure that it's right before it goes to the adoption process, and we anticipate a couple of months of, of meetings with you all, with the city council, before this becomes the law of the land in the city of Sparks. And so, our goals in conclusion are, first of all, a code that's a lot easier to understand. You guys would be surprised if you go around the country, you know, how good a shape your code's actually in today. I mean, it's not the worst code we've ever seen, but it is in need of a reorganization. There are a lot of things that are scattered, disorganized, and they make the, the information you need to find, not real easy to find. So we're going to get that into shape, and, and write things in a way that people who have real jobs, and then they have to get into the planning world, can understand. We're going to have a use table that's, that's complete, comprehensive, but also coherent, and makes the information, again, easy to find. We're going to have practical, market-based standards, and that's one thing we're going to come to grips with, you know, with the TOD plans and things like that, that've gotten various levels of reception from the development community. So we're going to work with them to not sacrifice the community's vision for urban design, we're not going to sacrifice the quality that you've gotten from development, but we want to make sure that the standards work for the way people in the city of Sparks live. And so, that's one thing we're, we're going to work on. We're going to have transparent procedures, you know, all of these drafts, from the outline to the final, and from our preliminary and final drafts, are many things that the general public has an opportunity to weigh in on. So with that, I'm done, and if you all have any questions, we're here to listen and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions? Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Mark, it sounds like you're the right man for the right job.
Well, thank you.
You bet. And, you know, with Jim's input, you talked to us at the study session, and you got your work cut out for you.
Yes.
For real. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of the codes, but one thing that caught my eye, and I'm going to make sure I, you know, throw my two cents in when it comes up, is the review of landscaping standards.
Okay.
It says in there, the advantage would, would decrease development costs, and the disadvantages could have potential negative impact on community character over time. I think it'd have a direct impact, not over time, but, you know, the minute something gets built, but I can't wait to be part of the process.
Okay.
And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You bet.
That's a good example of the balancing act we go through when we update these. And I think you've done a great job of landscaping in the past. I mean, just driving around the city, even in the industrial areas, you can't see half of the industrial uses, because they're landscaped so well. So I think you can congratulate yourselves on the, the good job you've done, but I think, yeah, it is a cost factor, and we'll work with the development community on that as well.
Right.
See if there's other things we can do that gives you the same level of quality. Anyone else?
Any other questions here? No. Okay, well, let's close that. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item now, we're getting into the public hearing time, and our first item is PCN 13012, Spanish Springs Presbyterian Church. Welcome. Karen.
Good evening, Finding Commissioners, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is a special use permit request to allow a church, and along with offices and classrooms, on a site approximately seven acres, within the Vineyards Professional Campus. This is the vicinity map showing, this is the, the campus property here, this is Sparks Boulevard. What they're proposing to do is, this is going to be tough to get, but, they are proposing to occupy the northwest building of the complex for the church. Initially, they anticipate to have a sanctuary of 122 chairs, and then eventually, they will relocate the sanctuary in a later phase and go up to 178 chairs. Staff felt the biggest issue that we saw, potential issue with this project, would be the parking. And in my staff report, I did a parking analysis, looking at the uses. I did concentrate on looking at parking only from this northern cluster. There are essentially three clusters of buildings on this property, and I concentrated my parking issues with the northern cluster. In the northern cluster, there is an existing of 144 parking spaces, and based on my analysis, during the day, it looks like that they would need to use 98 parking spaces, and on weekends and in the evenings, maybe 70 would be occupied by the uses in this northern So, based on that, staff felt that with the shared use, because the church would be mostly in the evenings or on weekends, that there would be adequate parking on-site for this use. Based on that, staff is recommending approval with nine, six conditions. That concludes, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions at this point? Okay, can I call up the applicant? Would somebody like to present or discuss anything?
We've got overall approval.
Yeah, well, we will have the open, right.
It'll come on.
You're welcome.
My name is Ron Marsh, and I'm chairman of the Long Range Planning Committee of Spanish Springs Presbyterian Church, attempting to put us in a new building.
Well, welcome.
I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. So, yeah, nothing you want to...
Well, we did, we did want to comment to the, to the two objections that were cited. The first was the parking issue that was mentioned by the woman who occupies the northeast corner building.
Okay.
We won't park there. We're going to be on the north side.
Right.
And we've done some surveys on weekends, and we rarely find an automobile in the entire For at least 15 of the last 20 Sundays, there's been no one in that center at all. The other thing is, someone was concerned about noise from across the street, and we will never have more noise than the street noise. We do not have faith bands or that sort of thing. We're a traditional church, and most of us are over 60.
Surly. Yes.
I don't think we'll be bad neighbors. We've been good neighbors in the Aspen Glen Center, where we've been for, basically, in two different locations for over 12 years.
Right.
We'd just like to get our own building instead of being a tenant.
Okay. Any questions at this time?
Sure. You say, is there any kind of meetings that would be happening during normal office hours, if some of these objections would happen?
There are a couple of our committees that meet during the day. Four or five members to the committee, at the most. We had one meeting yesterday, there were three, three participants, three cars. There's two office staff on a daily basis, an occasional bookkeeper will come in for a few hours, twice a week, three times a week at the most.
And you just had Sunday services and Saturday nights, or...
Just Sunday, just Sunday. Apparently, we're only offering one service. Prior to this, we did have two, an eight o'clock and a, and a 10:30, we now have 10:30 only. We would like to be able to offer our facility for outreach to the, to the general public. Al-Anon-type meetings or something of that could be, could be offered, and our new pastor wants to talk with, with the city folks about any opportunities we might have to help the city out in that way. We do have a Boy Scout troop that meets once a month, and this building will be much more useful to them than where we're presently at. So that's our long-term goal, is to provide some facilities for community outreach. So that's our long-term goal, is to provide some facilities for community outreach.
Other question?
Other question? Karen, so if there's any community outreach or other groups, stayover groups, does that impair your parking assumptions at all?
I don't think so.
No. Generally, I would assume that those meetings would be in the evening. And, I mean, this building has, does have parking designated for it during the daytime too, so I can't imagine that they would ever have a use during the office hours that would be more than, I mean, would even reach the 70 needed parking spaces.
Never.
Other question?
There would be one, excuse me, it's not, never is not a good answer. An occasional memorial service or wedding could cause a daytime use. More generally, those are on weekends, but it could be scheduled midweek. That would be an hour or so.
Yeah, one of my biggest questions you already answered, but was the band practice and music and different things. This is a lot of the offices around there that I contacted, say, well, if they're loud, you know, if it gets into our, but it sounds like you're more of a...
We have a trombonist, he's with us, right here.
The choir director's a flautist, I think.
Occasionally, he plays the guitar.
Yeah, okay.
And we have a five-piece brass band that visits us a couple times a year. That's it. Organ, piano.
Okay, any other questions at this point? Okay, again, this is a public hearing item, so I want to open the public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak on this item or against this item, you have three minutes. Come down here if you'd like to speak. Boy, this looks like a good, quiet little, everybody's happy with pastors, if you'd like to come up and say something, I figured.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Howard Dotson. I'm the pastor, transitional pastor at Spanish Springs. I had a nice conversation today with Rosemary Lovin, who's one of the folks who was concerned.
Right.
And if you look at the layout there, on the northeast corner is the, those executive suites. Right next to them, on the south, is Horizon, the church that was there.
Right.
And they're right next to each other. And so I want her to feel heard, and I think we're going to be a good neighbor and find ways to, you know, not impinge on those. She works in the evenings a lot, and there is a grassy area where the kids might enjoy, but we're going to keep on our side of things.
Okay.
And I understand her frustration that originally it was offices, then it became programming, and so we're aware of some, you know, mending offenses in terms of, you know, making sure that, you know, there's no false pretenses here.
Yeah.
The other thing about the, we've already talked about the noise issue, we're aware of, you know, the traffic with kids and the concern about, there's folks that go through there to cut through to get back on to, so we may be looking at kind of doing a survey of maybe a need for speed bumps or something to slow people down when they have kids. We're excited and we'll be good neighbors. I call it happy-clappy. We don't do happy-clappy. We're very traditional Protestant, so no worries there.
That sounds good. Any other questions right there? Okay, nobody else from the public wants to speak? Let me close the public, bring him back to the table. Anybody got any more questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
I, for one, I'm going to support the special use permit. I live just west of where you want to go, in Mason Meadows subdivision, and I'm sure you'll be good neighbors. So with that...
But are you?
You're going to have to put up with Commissioner Lean.
I like that.
You have a rock.
I support the special use permit.
Okay. Any other comments before? Somebody want to make motion then?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
In a way, you're making one.
Right.
Yes.
I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 13012, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the fact supporting these findings that's set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 6 as listed in the staff report.
Second? Okay, I have first and second. Any more comments? All right, then let's call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Good luck. Welcome. Very nice. All right. Hurried to wait a little while with our other... Okay, next item is CA1-13 on the codes. I guess, who's going to present that?
I was just waiting for them to...
Sure, and that's quite all right. Oh, that's okay.
Good evening, planning commissioner Karen Melby, senior planner. This is our first code amendment for 2013, and what we're proposing is to change two sections of the off-site parking code. The first section is, right now, within the industrial area, you can have up to 40% of your parking off-site, and we are proposing to allow all of that, except for your handicap or ADA-required parking, must still be on-site. And that in the code right now says that you had to have it under control for 10 years, and what we're proposing is that it would be done annually with the renewal of their business license, as opposed to having it under control, which is the term in the code, for 10 years. The second component that we're proposing to change is a pretty small change. Under shared parking, you can have a parking, basically what I would call a parking study, but you have to have over five acres. And what we're proposing, that it would be not just a commercial, but any non-residential developments, and there is no restriction on the lot size. You can come in with any study using the referenced guides in the code. We're not proposing to make any changes there. That concludes what we're proposing as a change. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? Okay, then, being a public hearing, let's open to the public. Anyone like to speak on this? You don't want to speak? Okay, I'll bring him back to the table. Any other, if somebody wanted to make a motion on?
I'll make a motion. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to city council of CA-1-13, to amend Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to permit and regulate parking.
Second? Okay, got a first and second. Any comments from commissioners? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes? Okay, next item is public comments. Again, this is anything that does not appear on the agenda. Anybody like to speak in the public? Last chance. You've been here before, I said, no. Okay, well, let's close that. Item number 11, any comments from commissioners? If you have anything you want to say. Tom? Okay, let's close that. Chairman, look for a motion.
So move.
Second, we're closed.